This is the 79th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Dante Hickman of Southern Baptist Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we are extremely grateful for the abundance of your grace and your mercy. We thank you for our legislative leadership and for this great city. We pray for your divine presence that they might conduct their legislative duties with confidence as well as conviction. Have your way in this new year in the life of our city. Bless our city council president and all of our city council persons. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Hickman, thank you so much. You just had to enjoy yourself for one. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hickman, for the invocation. The clerk will call the rolling members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Curran, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Welsh, Ryssinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenters is Girl Scout Troop 10383 from Roland Park Elementary School. They will talk about how they embody the Girl Scout missions of building girls of courage, confidence, and courage to make the world a better place. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Hi, we're from Troop 10383 and we are from the Roland Park neighborhood. We're part of the Roland Park Elementary Middle School. And my name is Ashley Handwork. This is my daughter Samantha Handwork. And girls, if I want to introduce you, will you please stand up? We have Talia Lundkin, Anna Wallingrad, Rebecca Mulcahy, Avery Goldstein, and Isabel Thomas. And today we're here because we're learning about our civics badge. Professor Matthew Mulcahy, who's one of the fathers of one of the girls, is a professor at Loyola, is helping us with this badge. So we appreciate coming to learn about local government today. And we do a lot of things together as a troop, including community service. And Samantha, you want to tell them about some of the community service we're doing?
So we sold our cookies. And one of the, what we wanted to do with the funds that we raised with our cookies was make a little lending library, which is a library that you fill with books and you can place it anywhere and people can read them and then put them back. Another thing we're going to do in the spring is we're going to do a community cleanup in one of the neighborhoods just to make our community better. And we also did, since my mom works at healthcare for the homeless, we decided to bake cookies and all sorts of goodies for them to use at their party for their addictions group. Because every two weeks, they have an addictions group and they graduate from the program. And so we made whoopee pies, gingerbread stars, and all sorts of yummy things for them.
So thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank Samantha and the entire Girl Scout Troop 10383 for being here today. And we appreciate the work that you're doing to make our community and our city a better place in which to live. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Curran, second by Councilwoman Costello. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings for the December 4th City Council Meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Vice President Ryssinger, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion current of the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda. Executive nomination.
EA 15-0257, Dr. Leanna S. Wen, Commissioner, Baltimore City Health Department, District 1.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0467, Departments of Public Works, Transportation and General Services, conforming code references to charter allocations. Ordinance for the purpose of correcting agency references rendered obsolete by charter amendments that have reallocated various powers and duties among these agencies, repealing certain obsolete or obsolescent provisions related to these and other units of city government, correcting, clarifying, and conforming the language of related provisions and generally relating to the administration and regulation of public works, surveys, public and private streets, highways, right-of-ways, transit and traffic, and general services. Sponsor, City Council's president on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0468, zoning conditional use restaurant drive-in, 5960 through 5980 Bel Air Road. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a restaurant drive-in on a property known as 5960 through 5980 Bel Air Road as outlined and read in the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Scott.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as I spoke about at lunch early today, many members of the council and the community of Second District have all been engaged in a fight to revitalize the Bel Air Road corridor. This bill will make a way for a big development that the community supports wholeheartedly to happen and take place. So we look forward to a great hearing without any opposition.
Please note that Councilman Curran is the co-sponsor. Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Specter.
Mr. President, members of the council, on the prior bill, you didn't see that I had raised my hand. At lunch today, we did discuss this and one of the--
Which one are you referring to?
Pardon me?
Which bill are you referring to?
150467.
Okay.
It would be helpful when the hearing, at the hearing when it is scheduled, that the administration does provide a cheat sheet, if you will, so that we can share with our constituents what responsibilities are transportation, what are general services. Our staff, I even get confused on what is the appropriate agency to address a constituent problem. So I hope that they'll be prepared to bring that to that hearing.
Okay, thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0469, plastic bag reduction. Ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting certain dealers from supplying customers with plastic bags for use as checkout or carryout bags. Authorizing certain exemptions, defining certain terms, imposing certain civil and criminal penalties, repealing the plastic bag reduction program, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Henry Curran, Clark Scott, Branch.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last fall, this council passed a plastic bag ban by a commendable number. And I think in showing that the will was here in the council to ban plastic bags as a way of addressing the litter and sustainability problems that exist here in Baltimore City, I was disappointed that there were concerns about the process that we went through in passing that ban. But those were not concerns that cannot be addressed. And so as a result, I'm introducing tonight the plastic bag ban as a ban. It is almost identical to the final version that was passed by the council last fall. The one difference is that there had been an exemption for cooked food in the previous bill. And if I could give a little bit of history, this exemption had been passed down from bill to bill, from version to version of the fee over the last six or seven years. It had originally been intended to be for cooked food provided inside supermarkets. Rotisserie chicken, I believe, was the example that we used back in 2008. But since then, most retailers have moved on from simply dropping your cooked food in a plastic bag to putting it into some type of structured container. And since many people had misinterpreted or occasionally misreported that exemption as being an exemption for restaurants and carryouts, which was not the intention, and frankly, as far as I'm concerned, would have undercut the importance of this bill, we felt it was just safer to remove the exemption entirely. It is my hope that we will proceed deliberatively with this bill, which is, I think, the nice way of saying, I'm not asking for a quick hearing. I'm making sure that there will be plenty of opportunity for all stakeholders to get their comments and concerns in to individual council people as well as to the committee that the bill has been referred to or will be referred to. It is also my hope that we will, as we're considering this bill, keep an eye on Annapolis. Because my understanding is that there will be attempts again this year in Annapolis to address the problem of disposable bags on a statewide basis. And if Annapolis were to move forward with that, it would address one of the major complaints that we who have fought to reduce the impact of disposable bags on Baltimore have continually faced, which is the danger of putting our businesses at a competitive disadvantage to businesses in the county. So I want to thank the co-sponsors that I have now, which I will note in passing is most of the committee that the bill is going to. And I look forward to additional co-sponsorships or support from my colleagues who supported this ban last fall. And my hope is that you will support it again this spring. Thank you very much.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0470, zoning conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a 15-family dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district, 3110 Crittenon Place. Ordinance for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a 15-family dwelling unit in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 3110 Crittenon Place as outlined and read in the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Clark.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, this is the mansion building on the Crittenon, two and a half acres in Hamed and overlooking the mill area, which the owner of those mills used to live in this mansion. That was bygone days. Now it is being recommended for renovation and for being divided into dwelling units. And the community has approved this going to multiple units and the preservation of the mansion. So I'm very happy that we've found something we can all agree on about this development. And this is it, the most important part of it, which is to preserve this mansion and all these associated buildings, which are a couple hundred years old and will now be preserved. I hope for a couple more hundred. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0471, Charter Amendment, multi-member city council districts. Mayor and City Council Resolution, for the purpose of amending the city charter of Baltimore City to reduce the number of council members and create multi-member city council districts, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsor, Henry Specter and Henry.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Specter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I know that we'll have a hearing. I appreciate that this bill has been assigned to the Judiciary Committee. There are many reasons. I've worked in both, multi-member and single-member. And recently, having vacancies in a district, in a single-member district due to vacancy and illness, there's times when an entire district doesn't have a voting member in the city council. And everybody knows politics are local. And it really worries me that there could be an extended period of time when an entire district doesn't have a voting member in local government, whether it's on a working committee or on the floor on a bill that is being voted by the council as a whole. So I appreciate it and I hope that we'll have a speedy hearing, Mr. President, members of the council. This would hopefully go on the ballot in '16 and actually not be in effect until 2020. Thank you.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise partly because I feel I would be remiss in not really calling to the body's attention the fact that in just over seven years, I don't believe any other piece of legislation has been sponsored only by Councilwoman Specter and myself. That's a pretty good range, ladies and gentlemen. I say that, I say that, it would be hard for it to be a wider range, frankly. And I have commented in the past that sometimes when bills are being introduced and I have not had a chance to read them fully. But if I look and I see that, for example, my colleague from the Fifth and my colleague from the Fourteenth have both sponsored it, it's got to be okay, that kind of thing. So I, but I wanted to stand also to speak on my colleague's behalf and say that while there may not be political will to move forward with the reconstitution of the council in the fashion that has been described in this particular amendment, I really do think it would be good for us to have an open conversation on whether or not the system that was set up by Question P, three elections back, is working as well as it was supposed to. We, I mean, we are the body who should be having that conversation. And it may be that people will speak out and say, yes, they like how it has turned out. They like the little council districts. They like the fact that it's easier for council people to give greater attention to a smaller number of neighborhoods. But it may be that we will see when, or hear when we have that conversation, that some of the promise of Question P has gone unfulfilled. And we should be continuing to look for better ways to organize the council that maximize the representation of the people. And so whether, wow, thank you. So whether we hear the bill formally, or the charter amendment formally, I would like to say, let's find some way to have this conversation. Thank you.
Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one time that I really feel like I need to just stand up and voice, I made a matter of record of how I just totally disagree with. This is not the way to go about having a conversation by saying that you want to go backwards to another way when, first of all, the people, this was already voted on and the people have made a point that they wanted single-member districts. Number two, throughout the whole state, we're all single-member districts. Number three, you know, this is all I know within my district. And I work hard in my district. I have a very supportive staff that support me and supports my community. It's all about partnerships and communicating with the faith-based community, your associations. It's, you know, you have to be a certain kind of person to hold this job, which I dearly respect and love. And, you know, if you feel that it's, you can't do this, then, you know, you have to think within yourself and do something else. But there's no statistics that prove that this is not working. We need to focus on issues that are going on now in the city. Issues like, you know, there's things with police brutality. There's homelessness. We need to focus on these issues. So as a matter of record, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Mosby.
Mr. President, colleagues, and to Madam Co-Sponsor, I just stand to just quickly say, and I know that we're not going to turn this into the committee hearing, but I deeply feel that this weakens the democracy in the city of Baltimore today. And I say that because with so much discontent towards the political process, with so much apathy in our voters and seeing the low turnouts, I think that this does nothing but bode well to folks who want to hold on seats for a long time. It doesn't provide folks with a new shot or a new opportunity to go after a smaller segment of votes in the city of Baltimore. So I would just quickly caution the council as we look into this bill to say incumbency power, that this would just do nothing but strengthen it.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0472, Urban Renewal Franklin Square Amendment. Ordinance for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Franklin Square to amend certain exhibits to reflect the change in the land use plan and the change in zoning on approval by separate ordinance for the property known as 31 through 35 North Fulton Avenue, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, make the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the applications of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Welsh.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Agent Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0473, rezoning 31 through 35 North Fulton Avenue. Ordinance for the purpose of changing the zoning of the property known as 31 through 35 North Fulton Avenue as outlined in black in the accompanying plat, from the R9 zoning district to the B22 zoning district. Sponsor, Welsh.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0200R, Investigative Hearing, Valet Parking Program. Resolution for the purpose of calling on representatives from the Departments of Finance and Transportation, the Parking Authority of Baltimore City, the BMZA, and the Baltimore City Police Department to appear before the council to report the implementation of the valet parking program created by ordinance in 2013, as well as revenue generated thus far as a result of the law, including but not limited to application fees, licensing fees, and citations issued for businesses that are not in compliance. Sponsor, Kraft, Middleton, Costello, Curran, Young, Henry Specter.
This has been assigned to the, oh, Chair of the Council, Councilman Kraft, but this has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I introduce this resolution at the request of both individuals and the associations in Little Italy. And I think they raise some really good questions here and these questions have continued to be directed to my office and not just out of Little Italy, but in other areas of my district. I think as most folks know, the majority of these valet parking areas are in my district and in Councilman Costello's district. There are some others around the city, but we have the large majority of them because we have most of the tourist restaurant areas and entertainment areas in the city and our districts. And the Parking Authority and Representatives of the Parking Authority and our Councilman Cole and I worked very hard on trying to get this valet ordinance into effect because it really was the Wild, Wild West out there in terms of people operating these parking lots, not being registered, not being insured, not being licensed. And people's cars were getting damaged and no one knew what was going on. No one was responsible. So the valet law is a good law. The problem that we're having is no one knows how to enforce it. You know, we call the police to enforce it. The police say, it's not our job. We're not the ones who enforce it. We call transportation to enforce it. Transportation says, you know, it's not our job to enforce it. We call the Parking Authority. They say, call police or call transportation. It's a circle. It's the dog is chasing his tail all the time. So what we'd like to do is bring them in, find out exactly what's going on, find out just how well it has been working, and then determine where we need to fix it, how we need to fix it, and get it so that it solves the problems that we're having so that when we do face these issues, and I'll use one, I won't name the restaurant, but there is a restaurant in Little Italy who purportedly uses valet. They pick the car up, they drive around the corner, and they park it on the street. That's a total violation of the law. We've had police see them do it. Police say they can't ticket. We've had DOT people do it. They say they can't ticket. And yet, it's clearly a violation of the law. They're supposed to take the car to a licensed lot under the law. So we need to get this straightened out. We need to figure it out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Scott, was your co-sponsor? Councilman Scott co-sponsor, Councilman Ryssinger, Councilman Welsh, Councilman Branch, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Mosby. You want to speak to it or you're a co-sponsor? Chair of the Council, Police and System is co-sponsors. Chair of the Council, Councilwoman Specter.
Thanks, Mr. President, members of the council. I do hope that the chair will have a speedy hearing on this. My district has this imposed on little areas that are basically residential with little pockets of commercial. And the cost is unbelievable for the license and for the valet parking permit, thousands of dollars a year. And it certainly is, I think, not been well thought through. So I would recommend that we have a speedy hearing. And I certainly have people that would testify that they have not come up with something that makes it better, that in fact makes it worse. Thank you.
Chair of the Council, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to add to what my colleague, Councilman Kraft, said. Enforcement of the valet law is critical because oftentimes, that's a piece of a memorandum of understanding or an MOU that a community association will have with a liquor license establishment or any type of restaurant, which, you know, agreeing to that MOU is usually, was contingent upon to get community support, whether it be at the liquor board or the BMZ. So I think it's important that we are diligent about enforcing that law. Thank you.
Thank you. You can find the consent calendar in section eight at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Councilman Curran, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in this calendar is approved. Chair of the Council, Councilman Kraft.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to move to have extended floor privileges to some of my students from the First District who participated in our Healthy Harbor poster contest.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the Councilmen, guests, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, your guests may take the floor.
Mr. President, I'm going to give these out here momentarily, but I'd like to direct everyone's attention to our wall over here where we have a number of the posters from our children that they have put together for Healthy Harbor. We have our children do this every year in our schools. And they talk about what the harbor should look like. And let me tell you a little bit about what we've had here. We'd like to thank our parents and teachers and especially the students for joining us today at our first city council meeting this year. We're really pleased to have you. Each of these students placed as a winner in the Healthy Harbor poster contest. Students in the First District were invited to draw their vision of what a clean and healthy harbor might look like. And each of our children have some posters here with them. These students responded with creative, thoughtful ideas and expressed them through their wonderful work. Some students, like Von Lynn, Von, and Leonardo, is Leonardo with us tonight? No, okay. Compared what a healthy harbor might look like next to an unhealthy harbor and demonstrated ways that it could be improved. Other students, like Imogen, Sophia, right? Huh? Tabitha, I'll get, oh, I jumped ahead on you. Show what kind of biodiversity might be possible if our harbor was healthy. And Tabitha, Brian, and Gabriella showed how communities and families might enjoy the harbor's beauty and contribute to its cleanliness. And Marisha's drawing reminds us that we all need to be united as we work towards making the harbor swimmable by 2020. So let's start first with Imogen. Let's see your poster here, okay? Can you tell us about your poster very quickly? Okay, now tell us about it.
It has a few ducks because I want there to be more ducks. And there's some crabs because I sometimes see crabs in the harbor. And I have a sea turtle because I want there to be a sea turtle in there.
Thank you. And Von, you want to tell us a little bit about your poster?
My poster is, my posters is what I think a dirty, healthy harbor looks like and a healthy harbor looks like.
Okay, and Tabitha?
My poster has a ton of animals because I think the animals would love to live in a healthy harbor. And I have the pride of Baltimore because it represents Baltimore.
And we have resolutions to present to each--
Hey, Councilman Kraft, before you give them the resolutions, can all three of them turn around? Because I think the cable station might can pick up those pictures. So if they, all three can turn around and hold their pictures up.
So we can show all of your drawings together.
Hold your drawings up. Just hold them up.
And then we'll make sure you get them on TV there.
They might can see them. They might can see them.
Okay? Go ahead. No, you're good. Okay, and now we'll give you your resolutions, and we'll give Tabitha hers, and these -- I'm going to read this once because they all say the same thing, okay? And it says, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution: Be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Tabitha Bryant in recognition of second place in the Healthy Harbor poster contest. The entire membership," that means all these people sitting up front here, "extend their best wishes on this memorable occasion and direct this resolution be presented on this 12th day of January 2015." And it's signed by Bernard, and myself on behalf of every single one of these council members. So here you are, Tabitha. Congratulations to you. And now we have one here for Von, and Von also has one, and Von has a second place also in the contest. Congratulations to Von. And then right here we have Imogen, and she also has second place. And ladies and gentlemen, our other poster winners were not able to make it this evening, but let's have a big hand for all of our proponents. Okay, turn around, okay? Thank you.
Chair Recognized Councilman Kern, I got you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the gentleman from the First District for the contest, and I spoke to the two young ladies and gentlemen outside for a few minutes and reviewed their posters. And I mentioned to them that I actually worked on the harbor for 16 years prior to becoming in this body, and I noticed that they all have some sort of wildlife in their posters that hopefully that can happen. But for the years I was down from 1980, '95, there wasn't any wildlife in the harbor, and I know it's ambitious, I'm aware that we can swim there by 2020 or whatever the year, but I thank these children, I thank them very much for their vision to have some wildlife in the harbor, outside of those that worked at the Sugar House. But I appreciate the gentlemen from the First District doing that contest, and as we try to clean the harbor up, we clean the styrofoam and any other waste in the stream that goes into the harbor. I'm glad to see that our children are coming up with a vision for what the harbor could look like.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. We here in the City Council approved a resolution before the holidays dedicating December 21st, which is the longest night of the year, to the memorial for the homeless that we annually observe in Baltimore. And this evening, what's being distributed by way of thanks and remembrance are photographs every homeless person whose name is called, who had died in the previous year, is represented by a votive candle at the Inner Harbor and also by a rose, a flower. And this is a photograph from that ceremony, and on our desks also are the names of the 116 homeless persons whose names were called at that ceremony, who passed in 2014, and we hope that you'll continue to keep them in your memory and in your prayers, and also to work and continue to work to end homelessness. I know the Girl Scouts worry about it, and I know that you're doing a lot to help, and I hope that we'll all do likewise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now move to Bills on Second Reader, Executive Appointment Committee.
EA 14-0256, Henry J. Raymond, Member Parking Authority Board.
Chair Recognized Councilman Welch.
President, the committee held a hearing on December 17th, and we moved the nomination favorable.
Seconded by Councilman Kern, all those in favor of confirming this nominee say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Third veto to be held, one meeting.
City Council Bill 14-0428 rezoning a portion of 2051 South Hanover Street for the purpose of changing the zoning of a portion of property known as 2051 South Hanover Street as outlined in red in the accompanying plot from the B32 zoning district to the M3 zoning district.
Third veto for final passage.
City Council Bill 13-0293, Unsafe Vacant Structure, for the purpose of modifying the criteria for determining that a structure is a vacant structure or is noncompliance with a notice or order issued by the building official, requiring that all windows, doors, and other openings of a vacant structure at any level be boarded and generally relating to the definition and required safeguardings of vacant structure. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Rice, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0436, Official City Slogan, Baltimore Birthplace of the Star Spangled Banner, for the purpose of establishing Baltimore Birthplace of the Star Spangled Banner as the official slogan of the city of Baltimore and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Rice, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-0442, Animal Control and Protection Empowerment Reform, for the purpose of deleting provisions allowing for the appeal of certain animal control decisions to the Circuit Court of Baltimore City by right, reducing the period in which an animal's owner must respond to the denial, suspension, or revocation of a license from 10 to 5 days, removing the requirement that a new owner of an animal whose previous owner has had a license denied, suspended, or revoked live outside the city, clarifying the requirements for transferring an animal to a new owner when the previous owner's permit for the animal has been denied or suspended, lengthening the period of time for which an animal who's had -- lengthening the period of time for which an individual who has had an animal permit denied or revoked may apply for another animal permit, allowing for the temporary empowerment of an animal during certain investigations, requiring the payment of certain animal care expenses when an individual requests review of a decision regarding the animal, correcting, clarifying, and conforming related provisions and generally relating to animal control and protection. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Walsh, Rice, Singer, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Clearing of the bill status, a list of bills to be cleared can be found on page seven of the agenda. Please inform our office in writing of bills that you would like removed from the list. Committee announcement. Chair Recognized Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Urban Affairs and Agent Committee will hear City Council Bill 14-0453 on February 26 here in Council Chambers at 4:00 PM, and it's an ordinance concerning the Baltimore City Landmark List, Almstead Parkwayes.
Chair Recognized Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 12-0111, Charter Amendment Veto's on Tuesday, January 20th, 2015, at 9:30 AM here in the Council Chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 14-0464, Hotels Human Trafficking Prevention, on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, at 9:30 AM here in the Council Chambers.
Committee announcements. Chair Recognized Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. Rosehead. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Council Bill 14-0465, Community Legacy Project Application, Govents Ecumenical Development Corporation on Thursday, January 15, 2015, here in chambers at 10:45 AM.
Chair Recognized Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments will hear Bill 14-0257, Dr. Lena S. Nguyen, Commissioner, Baltimore City Health Department, on Wednesday, January 12, 21st, 2015, at 10:00 AM, Council Chambers. Thank you.
Chair Recognized Councilman Vice President Rice Singer.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 14-0197 on Wednesday, January 14th, at 1:00 PM in the Council Chambers. This is Request for State Action on On-Street Parking Flexibility. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 14-0434 on Wednesday, January 21st, at 1:15 PM in the Council Chambers. This is Zoning Conditional Use. It's Amending Ordinance 06-353. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill 14-0397 on Wednesday, January 28th, at 1:00 PM in the Council Chambers. This is For Residential Permit Parking Program Located in the Hamden North Area. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0456 on Wednesday, February 4th, at 1:00 PM in the Council Chambers. This is a rezoning of 2001, 2011, 2013, 2105, 2107, and 2201 West Cold Spring Lane. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on City Council Bill 14-0444 on Wednesday, February 4th, at 1:10 PM in the Council Chambers. This is zoning, sign regulations, sponsor a road sign. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 13-0294 on Wednesday, February 4th, at 1:20 PM in the Council Chambers. This is to reconvene a public hearing. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, variances at 1201 North Fulton Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 13-0302, Wednesday, February 4th, at 1:25 PM in the Council Chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use converting of a one-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, variances at 1934 Wilkins Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0419, Wednesday, February 4th, at 1:30 PM in the Council Chambers. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a two-family dwelling unit to a four-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district located at 100 South Stricker Street. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0431 on Wednesday, February 4th, time at 1:35 PM in the Council Chambers. This is a zoning conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a two-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district, variances located at 2125 Orleans Street. Also, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0435 on Wednesday, February 4th, at the Council Chambers. Also, this is zoning conditional use conversion of a one-family dwelling unit to a three-family dwelling unit in the R8 zoning district located at 2437 Madison Avenue. Mr. President and members of the committee, I just wanted to say that transform Baltimore hearing schedule is forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. We're on regular announcement. Please note that the mayor will present her State of the City address on Monday, February 23rd. And additionally, please note that the February 23rd city council meeting will begin at 4:30 PM so that council members can attend Baltimore night in Annapolis. I would also like to welcome Marshall Bell to the Office of Council Services. Marshall is no stranger to City Hall. He worked during the administration, former President Lawrence Bell doing similar type work. So welcome back to City Hall. I would like to wish a happy birthday to Councilman Warren Branch. His birthday is this Friday, and I want to wish that he have a very happy birthday. Don't eat too much cake, and you know what I mean by that, don't eat no cake. Any other announcements? Chair Recognized Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know you'll be there at 6:30 and invite my colleagues and the rest of the city. Today, we kick off the seventh Get Fit Challenge at Mondomin Mall at 6:30. We've partnered with over 40 health and wellness centers throughout my district mostly, but also spilling over in some of the other areas to provide a free resolution. I know when I came on the council in 2011, I was a lot lighter than I am today, and we all understand and know that the foundation of really growing our city and growing our communities is health. I share a personal story. You know, I was always taught to grow up and try to go and do the right thing, and I'm the first person in my family to go away to college, and it's something that my grandmother and mother instilled into me very early. Well, unfortunately, my grandmother died when I was in the ninth grade, so she never got a chance to see that. And another dream I had was to be an elected official in the city of Baltimore one day since the third grade, and unfortunately, my mother never got a chance to see that because she died in 2010. So again, this is serious, we have to take our health serious, and you know, this is a personal challenge for me to ensure that I'm around to see the successes of my children's children. So I ask you to come out. Everything is totally free. It's for three to four months, everything from free yoga to kickboxing to swimming to any and everything you can name. We have all different type of partnerships. So Mr. President is going to join me, he's going to challenge me in a couple other classes, and I ask my colleagues to do the same. So today, it starts today, and it's going to be at Mondomin Mall at 6:30. If you're unable to attend, but you would like to participate in one of the classes, please just call my office or stop past my office. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Recognized Councilman Scott. Councilman Scott, you going to do both of your things?
All three, yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise first with a heavy heart to talk about some sad news that northeast Baltimore has suffered over the weekend. First, we lost Officer Chandler, Craig Chandler, from Northeast District this past weekend, who was actually a friend of mine, but even better public servant, someone that was dedicated to making Baltimore a better place, someone who was dedicated to the communities that he served, and also a dedicated family man. So please, Council Vice President Rosener is going to be asking for a moment of silence in his name, so please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. And actually, today, after our luncheon, I was notified that Lenny Braxton, Coach Lenny from Heron Run Recce, Northeast Baltimore Noah, died last night in his sleep. It's something, someone that children throughout Northeast Baltimore, who they love and adore him, and to have him's family in your thoughts and prayers would be greatly appreciated as well because it's someone who has grew up in Braxton and Northeast Baltimore, and then to take one over and to have programming and to have the amount of parents and students who have already reached out to me in shock and disbelief, and just to see the look on the face of the young children when they found out shows how much he means to them and how much he meant to that community. So please, keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well. And with that, I will move to, on a lighter and more important note, a better note, we know that January is National Mentoring Month throughout the United States of America, and we all know how important mentoring is to me. And Mr. President, before I ask for floor privileges for my guests, I just wanted to say that we know that mentoring works. A lot of the issues that we have in the city of Baltimore and throughout this state, in my opinion, can be resolved if we had more people step up and to be in the lives of young people. Mentoring helps. It shows, the data shows that people, young people that have mentors are less likely to get arrested, but on the flip side, they're more likely to go to college, to graduate from college, to graduate from high school, to succeed academically, to succeed in life. So if anyone who does not, as I often say, anyone in Baltimore who is not mentoring at least one, when I ask you to do 100 like the council president does, or myself, we just ask you just one, one young person, you can ultimately make a life, a difference in the life, and that life can also -- the best thing about mentoring, if you ask anyone that mentors, is that it changes the mentor's life as much as it changes the mentee's life. Your life will change by interacting with young people. Your life will change, your thoughts, your outlook, how you live your daily life will change when you're impacted by a beautiful young person. Before I do that, I want to recognize that from Big Brothers Big Sisters, we have a bunch of people, and Mr. President, I would like to move for floor privileges for my guests.
Second from, seconded by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of extending floor privileges to the councilmen, guests say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. You cut them off.
This is on. Mr. President, members of the council, we are joined tonight by Terry Hickey, who is the president and CEO at Big Brothers Big Sisters. Of course, he is no stranger to any of us, but we're also joined by a match from Big Brothers Big Sisters P3B program. This is a new part of their program they works with, first child during our offenders, and we have Jeremiah Moore, who is a junior at Blueford-Jimison High School. He's also a track athlete, so him and I had a good discussion about that, of course, in my office, and his mentor, Robert Leonard. So please give them a round of applause. And just very quickly, I was going to, I told them I would let them talk a little bit about why he mentors and what the mentor relationship means to them.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmen. I'm new to Big Brothers Big Sisters, been paired up with Jeremiah for the past couple months, and you know, I wanted to be there for somebody in Baltimore City, and I was very happy to be matched up with Jeremiah. in Baltimore City, and I was very happy to be matched up with Jeremiah. One thing that I am appreciative about is that I think I'm learning as much as Jeremiah's learning from me. And this has been a great couple of months for us so far. And I look forward to the year of us spending time together.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremiah, and I'm a mentee at Big Brothers Big Sisters program. I was matched up with my friend and my slash, my brother, Mr. Robbie. At first, I really wasn't caring about anything, not even wanting to join the program. But then, once I started going there and starting to see others, starting to see other teams there, I figured, if they can do it, I can do it. And he changed my life a lot. I only knew him for about two months, but it seems like it's been forever. And that's my man. And we do a lot together. He come support me when I need him. And, family, I wasn't grown up, I wasn't grown up with a male figure in my life. So, with him, he's like that, he's like that part in my life. And he helped me.
If I could for just a brief second. This is one of the best things I've ever gotten to come speak in front of city council about. So, I appreciate this moment. Even though it was categorized as a juvenile justice program, I think it's important to note, this is a move of Big Brothers Big Sisters to move to an area where we're helping older youth, period, and helping to build that transition to work in college. And it's the older youth that we really haven't, I think, stepped to the table. So, we're looking for mentors, bigs for everyone. But we're also really looking to serve older youth in our community. So, if any esteemed members of the council are interested in becoming a big brother, a big sister, or anybody listening, biglittle.org will take care of you. We have 900 kids in central Maryland, 500 in Baltimore City on a waitlist. So, we need all the help we can get. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll do this very quickly, everybody. So, City of Council Resolutions, here Baltimore. City Council Resolution. We recognize Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Greater Chesapeake in recognition of the occasion of National Mentoring Month and your dedicated commitment and devotion to improving the lives of young people in Baltimore through your extraordinary spirit services this 12th day of January 2014. Signed by myself and all council members. Thank you and congratulations.
All right. Any more announcements? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, I appreciate my colleagues raising up for our sympathy and prayers. The officer Craig Chandler, who died over this weekend. He was injured several weeks ago now and just didn't make it through. And he passed on Kirk Avenue in the 14th District, in the Northeast District. And as my colleague has indicated, we express our sympathy and loss to his family and to the family of officers and Baltimore City, of which he was such an esteemed member. I would like to also mention the passing of a wonderful friend of a lot of us in the 14th District, Catherine Levesque. She makes you smile just thinking about her. She, I guess she was in her 80s when she passed. But she was a social worker, and she lived social work in her own home and family. We all knew her, we all loved her. And she traveled everywhere on MTA, which in itself is an accomplishment in life. And she always got there to help people. So, I'd like her to be remembered in our moment of silence tonight. Let me also acknowledge that Adam Schneider is here this evening with this year's crop of students. Could you stand up if you're Adam Schneider's students, please, so we can acknowledge you? Adam Schna... yeah. They get handsomer and smarter every year. And we're really pleased to have them. And finally, I want to say a special thanks to the Girl Scouts who are here getting their badge. I was, I was thinking about it a lot. I was a Girl Scout. My mom was the troop leader, and she was wonderful. She even went out and got a uniform she wore. And she was the troop leader for a couple of years. I learned so much by being in the Girl Scouts, and I'm listening to this mentoring program and how important it is. But if you're in the Girl Scouts, you have a whole program already where the world is mentoring. And all we ask in return is keep selling those cookies and keep earning those badges until there's no room left on, on your... What do you call, what do you call those things? Sashes? Yes. So, Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned this at the last council hearing of 2014, but it's worth mentioning again. On January 26 and the 27, the mayor's office of Human Services, along with Journey Home, is going to be doing the annual PIT Point in Time Count. It's essentially a census for all the homeless people in Baltimore City. It's really important that we raise awareness about this issue. I'll be out there on Sunday evening at 10:00 p.m. at our Daily Bread Employment Center. There'll be a one-hour training. The census count will be taking place from midnight until 6:00 a.m. in the morning on both Monday and Tuesday. I hope to be out there for the duration of that. The mayor's office has agreed to provide a case of Diet Coke to help keep people awake. But I hope to see everyone out there. Thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
I'd just like to give a shout out to our, congratulations to our new state's attorney, Marilyn Mosby, that has started. And I'm sure we all wish her much success.
Absolutely. Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on, on good notes, I'd like to wish happy birthday to my chief of staff, Emily Sherman, who will have her birthday on Wednesday. Stand up, Emily. That's it. Mr. President, on another note, and I know they can't hear me, but I would like to congratulate the people of New York City on passing a styrofoam ban. Eight years later. And on a much more serious note, on a much more serious note, Mr. President. The, I have two, two people, actually I have four tonight, that I would like to have moments of silence for. One is a woman who many of us in this chamber knew. Many of us dealt with her personally over the years. She was the former editor of the Baltimore Guide. Not only was she the former editor of the Baltimore Guide, but many folks in southeast Baltimore, and actually across the city, would say that the southeast anchor library, the only real anchor library in the city of Baltimore, would not have been built were it not for Jackie Watts. And we lost Jackie this past week. And it's a tragic loss, not just for the people of southeast Baltimore, but for the entire city. She was a citizen of Baltimore, and she will be sorely missed. So, I would ask that we would remember Jackie Watts this evening. In addition, Mr. President, the country lost a great American on the first day of this year. A person who, who led this country and many people thought at one time may have become president of the United States. And that was former Governor Mario Cuomo, who passed away on January 1. I actually had the privilege to have been at the Democratic National Convention in 1984 when, when Governor Cuomo gave the speech responding to President Reagan, talking about the city, I mean, the nation being a shining city on a hill. And Governor Cuomo getting up and saying that there really was a tale of two cities. And those were the cities that were shining on the hill and then the impoverished cities across America that weren't being addressed. And unfortunately, Mr. President, we still have those two cities across America. And I know that everyone in this room works every day to try to erase those two cities and bring us to one shining city on a hill. And finally, Mr. President, this year, we celebrate the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II. And there's a good thing about that because, one, we have been able to go 70 years without having the world experience another folly such as World War II. The bad news is that we are losing every day the remaining members of the greatest generation. And we lost two of them in the past week from southeast Baltimore who came out of our neighborhoods. One of them actually served the city, Baltimore City Fire Captain Joseph Tomaszko. He served in the U.S. Navy. And then he later spent 42 years in the Baltimore City Fire Department and retired as a captain from the fire department. He passed away earlier this week. And a true son of Highland Town, Second Lieutenant Ted Hens, who was stationed in England where he became a bombardier on B-17. He flew 25 missions during World War II. He received the Distinguished Flying Cross. He died last week at the age of 96. He became a practicing attorney and practiced law for 75 years. So, I'd ask that we would remember former Governor Mario Cuomo, Ms. Jackie Watts, Baltimore City Fire Captain Joseph Tomaszko, and Army Air Force's Second Lieutenant Ted Hens with a moment of silence this evening.
Thank you. Also, I want a moment of silence for Grace Y. Jones. She was 90 years old, and our funeral was today. She was a former president of the Broadway Development Corporation, which was a community organization, Grace Y. Jones. Also, I want to announce that Kalen McGough Benson, who's worked in my office for the last four years, is leaving to take a job with a nonprofit. And I want to thank her for a great job that she have done for the office of the president. I didn't kick out or anything like that. You know, people look for better opportunities, better pay, and something that they really want to do. And she wanted to really work in the nonprofit world where she can make a big difference. So, I want to hit my heads off to her. She going to be truly missed in my office, but a great worker. Chair recognizes Councilman Branch. Thank you so much, Mr. President. And I also want to, last week, we had a loss in our district, one of the strongest community association leaders, past president of Berea. I call her the mother of Berea. Because she, during the hard times and struggles, she continued to keep that community association, Mrs. Teller Giles, Mrs. Teller Giles, the mayor. Yourself and I, we did attend her funeral last week. And at least I can honestly say that she did get to see some of her flowers before she passed. We did, last year, we had a ceremonial street sign named after her. So, for Mr. Teller Giles and her family. Thank you.